You are all set.
Okay, good evening, everybody. We're returning to open session. And our, on our agenda for the rest of this evening is our open session called to order. Our, at six o'clock. This meeting is being recorded by W A C A Cable TV. And our order of business is agenda review and adoption. We have recognitions and student presentations, the 2019 retirees, the Student Advisory Council. We also have something that's further down on the agenda, but I'm going to be asking for some consensus to move that ahead, and that's the J K A A policy, to move that there. We'll have a moment for public comment and items of interest to the public, including the Warren and Pittaway School Improvement Plans, the High School School Improvement Plan, the acceptance of the superintendent's evaluation, the superintendent's contract, student travel requests, including A H S Model U N Club to Exeter, New Hampshire, October 27, 2019, A H S Model U N Club to Lowell, November 8th, 9th, 2019, A H S Model U N Club to Miami, March 5th through 9th, 2020, A H S Model U N Club to Boston, March 20th, 22, 2020. The school committee calendar, and we have administrative items, including the superintendent's report, the assistant superintendent's report, warrant approvals, and consent actions, including the approval of minutes, May 22, 2019, acceptance of gifts and donations, committee reports of activities, member updates, action items, and then we will adjourn, hopefully before the Bruins game. Is anybody, is everybody okay with that plan for the evening? We'll see.
The adjournment part?
Yeah. Yeah. We shall see.
About eight o'clock.
Is everybody okay with the plan?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Excellent. Does everybody have consensus to move that item, J K A A, up a little further into the agenda?
Yep.
Excellent. Okay. Wonderful.
Just for Kathy.
Yes. So we will start with the 2019 retirees, and where shall we start? You invite, uh...
Principals up first?
Principals up first. Start with the Warren School?
Mr. Regan, yeah, sure.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And Pittaway?
Did you get dunked tonight? That's the question.
I've been dunked at least twenty times.
Twenty times?
Yes.
Okay. Fair enough.
Mrs. Altman was dunked, Mrs. Tripp, Mrs. Clark was also dunked. We had quite a few who were dunked today. I, I am humbled to have the opportunity to, to present Pat Murphy tonight. Pat Murphy has been in our district for thirty years, teaching our kindergarteners the incredibly important skills about how to treat other people. Over these three years, I've been able to watch her on a daily basis of how she interacts with the adults in the building, but also the children, and how much she models our core values of being kind, safe, responsible, respectful, and all of her students that leave her classroom of how well they treat one another and treat people in our community. It's a testament to her amazing work over these years. Thank you, Pat, for everything you've done.
You don't have to say anything, but everybody at home or on live streams still want to see you. Give them a prize for you. And I also want to thank you so much, uh...
Thank you.
From the school committee and all the administrators and the whole district, and hundreds and hundreds of parents over the years. Thank you so much for every...
Thank you so much. Thanks.
Thank you, Pat.
No Mendez?
No Mendez.
Okay. Yep.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I'm here to present two retirees from Ashland Middle School. The first of which is Susan Piper. Susan was an E S P at the middle school for fourteen years, working in our sub-separate programs. And what strikes me about Susan and working with her for these past seven years, I think, is her commitment to the students in those programs, and just how much she cared and how much time and effort and energy that she poured into those students, how much she talked about those students, and talked about the progress they were making. If you didn't know Susan, it didn't matter. You knew how much she cared for the students in that program. And, and I think that's what I'd remember most. The Special Olympics standout, I know we were talking about that as one of her favorite days because not only could you see some of those students compete and perform, but also she could see those students who moved up to the high school, who she dearly missed and wanted to check in on and talk to and connect with their parents. She's, I know she's planning a move. We were talking up to, back up to New Hampshire, where she raised her family. She's in process. I want to thank her for those fourteen years, for how much she's cared for the students at the middle school, and we wish her all the best. Congratulations, Susan.
Get your prongs. I think it's going to be on TV for a second. You're a woman of faith.
Come on, Kelly.
Our next retiree is Tammy Knoth. Tammy has been working at Ashland Middle School since 1998, where she was instrumental in writing the curriculum. And since I've been there, I know has also been instrumental in its constant revision and review to make sure that the middle school is presenting to students the very best of what we can do and provide. And she's been a strong voice for the staff, is a former A E A president, as well as started Chromebook grants in getting devices into the middle school, and was one of the first teachers to do that. I can speak, in the last couple of years, watching and being very proud of her creation of the Timepiece, or bringing back the Timepiece magazine, which I know we presented. We had some students present here, going back, giving students the forum and the opportunity to showcase their skills, write about what they're passionate about. They had meetings in her room, and edited and created, and had them put out that magazine. And I know how proud that she is and that the students are of their work. So I remember that very fondly, as, as well as the Holocaust unit that we worked together to create, to really give students that different perspective, and to have them understand and develop empathy and compassion, as well as learn about history. And that has been hugely successful. And we've seen benefits from that from students, since that was implemented going back two years ago. She's always expected the most of our students. She's always had high expectations, and she always is very passionate about making sure that in terms of reading, in terms of writing, and encouraging a passion for their writing, so that when they head to the high school, that they were ready to go. So I want to wish congratulations to Tammy Knoth, and give her a thank you for all of her years of service.
Even personally, having my girls, I feel so old. The room has had my kids many years ago, so thank you on behalf of the entire school district.
Hi, everybody. At the high school, we have three retirees, although I am confident we're not saying goodbye to any of them. First is Len Rubenowitz, who has been a history teacher at the high school for the past eighteen years. During his time with us, he taught a variety of courses, including his popular History of Genocide elective. He's a teacher who has always been willing to volunteer his time whenever I ask for help or assistance. He's one of the first to say, "I'm in." He has volunteered, he's been on the Ask Steering Committee searches for superintendent, most recently served on our site council. Len helped institute the virtual high school program to kind of increase and enrich our course offerings, has always been an advocate for increasing use of technology. He wrote a grant, brought in a smart board, and then I was present to see him train his colleagues on that, and share the tools that he brought in. Len's passions, which are music and astronomy, have been integrated into every class he's taught, and he will continue to enjoy these passions as he moves on to the next phase of his career, including his new WACCA TV show. And he has already told us he is, he's ready to come back and be a substitute teacher on his time. So thank you, Len.
Thank you for all you've done over the years.
Absolutely.
Thanks, Len.
I had to better end of the field. I really did.
Thank you.
Terry Henry has only taught at Ashland High School for two years, but has made a huge impact in that time. She's been with Ashland Public Schools for twenty years. She prides herself on being part of the many innovative programs that have been a part of Ashland. She began her career at Mendez as a sixth grade teacher, and was one of the founding mothers of the neighborhood program. When the sixth grade moved to the middle school, she obviously went with them, and then transitioned to the eighth grade, and then took over as the new STEM teacher when that position was created, teaching fifth through eighth graders, STEM. And then always looking to grow, as we were growing electives at the high school with the new Ashland Innovation Center, asked if she could come to the high school and teach those courses, which is what she has done for us for the last two years with, you know, primary focus in computer science. And in this role, she's been able to work with all students, because she oversees our after-schools programs as well, is one of the teachers, still working with Mendez and middle school kids, and our high schoolers, leading clubs such as Girls Who Code. So she, what was I else going to say? Although Terry is retiring, we are also grateful that she is going to come back and teach two classes for us next year. I know you all have heard about our growth in computer science interest and elective, so she will continue to teach two classes for us. Thanks, Terry. And last but not least, Sue Bronstein has been teaching high school English in Ashland since January of 1996. Prior to that, she taught at Christopher Columbus High School in the North End for three years, and then Minuteman Tech in Lexington for ten years. She has served as department head slash liaison since 2002. In addition to teaching all levels at the high school, she has done a lot of work with DESI, which has been a great resource for us on a variety of committees, some of which she will continue to serve on, such as MCAS development, alternative portfolio assessments, the English MTEL, which is the teacher test, and Park, the Park exam. She's looking forward to doing some consulting work, teaching communication skills in the workplace, and moving to Boston in July with her husband of thirty-one years, Steve, spending time with her kids, Sam, who is twenty-six, and Sophie, who's nineteen, and both graduates of Ashland High School. And she is most proud of that two of her former students were inspired to become English teachers, and one of them right with us at Ashland High School. And she has promised she'll also come back if we need her, so.
Thank you so much. You're all you've done on behalf of all of us, and we wish you so much happiness in Boston. Be sure we'll be seeing you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
I just want to say thank you so much on behalf of the entire school committee to all of you. Like, they're probably like hundreds of years' worth of dedication in this room if we added it all up. And I know the impact that many of you had on my own kids. I'm sure there are other people here that would say the same thing, and hundreds of parents across the district, you have, if not the most important job in the whole world, one of them. And we appreciate that, and we appreciate you, and we wish you just so much good fortune and good luck and good health on your next journey. Thank you. And I'm going to release you in a second, but since I have an audience, I'm going to make you stay for one more second, because we have one more person that's leaving us tonight, and that's Nicole. And so I, but I want you to all hear how fabulous she is. We're, we've always been so lucky to have wonderful student representatives that chime in in our discussions when they're comfortable, and bring so much perspective. But Nicole, you really often, I think everybody would agree, you brought us perspective often that some of us hadn't probably considered, the student perspective, your own very mature way of looking at things. You weren't shy about giving your opinion, and sometimes it was an opinion that might, you might not have heard anybody else give, and I think that's saying a lot for a high school student to come sit on a, a board of, you know, people that have been here for a while, and, and hold your own, and you did. And it was just so lovely to have you, and I'm sad that we're saying goodbye to you, because you're actually like a really important part of this dynamic. But we're so proud of you, and we're so excited about your future, because you have a million and one things going for you. And we want you to promise to come back and fill us in and visit us, and let us know how you're doing. So thank you so, so much for everything. Here's your prize. Feel free to go. We're going to move on to our, our business unless you want to hear it.
Yeah.
Yeah. And you as well.
We just wanted you here for that.
Yeah. Yeah. Yes. Student Advisory Council. Come on up.
I did so much.
Yes.
Hey, Nicole. You can take your little name tag, too. Not the whole thing, just a tag.
It's your souvenir, so you don't forget us.
But we're on a budget, you can't look at the bracket. This is a bookmark.
So, welcome.
Hello, everyone. I'm Rachel Hopkins. I will be a senior next year, and I will be serving as the student representative.
Awesome. Welcome, Rachel.
Thank you. I'm very excited.
It's nice to meet you. We're excited to have you.
Thank you. And then I'm also introducing Josie Kaufman, who will be a junior next year, and Helen Bergate, who will also be a junior next year.
Awesome. Welcome, ladies.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jermaine. I'll be a junior. I served on this committee for this year. So... So some of the things that have been happening at the high school, so we have finals week this week, and we have two more days of finals, B and C, and then A period. And during finals week, after the finals, the Model U N has been putting on a movie marathon, which has been like really entertaining for people who are stuck in the school during finals week. We had, also had sticker shock, which is a program run by SAD, which is Students Against Destructive Decisions. It's when we go to seventy different convenience stores in Ashland that sell alcohol, and we put stickers on all the different products, reminding people that you're underage, you shouldn't be buying this, and people shouldn't be buying it for people who are underage. We also had Senior Week for all the seniors. I'm not sure where they went or what they did, but I heard that they all had a lot of fun. We also had Class Day and Graduation. I know that as being there, it was a really nice celebration for all the seniors, and I wish them all the best luck. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Caroline Ellis. I'm going to be a junior next year, and this is also my second year as, on the school committee advisory council. Since I was last here, we have had class elections, so things like president, vice president, secretary, treasurer, et cetera, for all of the classes. They, all the students running gave their speeches, and we all had votes. And so we have new boards for each class, and for things like this. And then also going on right now, a lot of clubs are organizing all of their trips. So clubs like Make-A-Wish are organizing their trip to Florida next year, and Breaking the Barriers is organizing their South Africa trip right now. And then we have also had MCAS, we had Bio-MCAS, English and math for the sophomores. So that's been, uh, fun. And then we, I know a lot of kids were taking AP exams. And then finally, the last thing is that although we're, you know, coming to the last of high school, many of our students are going to be participating in the Jake Silver Walk on June 22nd, so.
Excellent. Thank you. How many more days left at school? Anybody know?
Two and a half.
Yeah. Exactly. They probably want to...
And you're, those, you're free to go, but yeah.
Yeah.
Miss St. Kurt's passing a message on to Rachel.
Gotcha.
Just text her. Check her student email.
Yes. She's, she's welcome to stay, but they're...
Yeah.
Yes. Is that what she's passing on?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're good.
Yeah. That's what I figured.
Good.
The choice has been made.
So do we want to move Ms. Silva first?
Yes. Yes. So, policy, J K A A, the physical restraint of students. This is a first reading. Mrs. Silva? Okay. Yes. And then you guys will be next.
Well, should you, do you want to do, ask for a public comment?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, thank you.
I doubt there will be, but...
Yes.
Sorry.
Just, just to be sure, is, if there's any, is there any citizen who would like to offer a public comment? Seeing none, I will move on to Ms. Silva. Thank you, Mr. Kendall.
Okay. I'm not really sure what happens with a first review of a school committee policy redraft, but I do want to thank Kathy Bates and Paul Kendall for, and Jim Adams, for being willing to be so conscientious in looking at this particular policy. It does have great meaning. It is the physical restraint policy that really spells out the commitment of the district to make sure that physical management of students is only happening as a very last resort when there is imminent risk to that student or to the safety of other students. This became something that was very seriously looked at in Massachusetts with a redraft of the regulatory guidance in, to be begun in 2016. And so looking at our policy to make sure that it complies with that regulatory change has been particularly important. Mostly, it's to make sure that we cover all the areas that both define what we mean by our words when we say physical restraint or management. It's to also make sure that we spell out our training, that we spell out exactly what type of physical management might be used, what type is prohibited, how one monitors the use of physical restraint within a school setting, and also how parents get that information about their child and the actions that might happen within a school setting, and how they can file a concern. So all of that gets spelled out in great detail within this policy. But again, I do want to say that it was, for me, an experience of incredible dedication and very careful consideration. We've met several times as a subcommittee to look at it. We've gotten council input. We've gotten input from D E S E as well, to make sure that we really do come up with a robust draft for people's consideration and for your review.
And the feedback has been it's compliant with the laws and...
Yes.
So I just had one question, because my understanding is that DESI does look to approve this particular policy?
Yes.
Has that already occurred? So we're kind of looking at something that's been blessed by everybody else, and if we were to...
Or is it after we vote? Yeah.
Yeah. And that's where it's going, so.
Yeah.
I try to make sure that we don't do something that then ends up having to be redone. So this draft has been sent to our compliance auditing team, and we have been told in an informal way that, yes, it seems to comply with all of the regulatory directives. But that final approval really doesn't happen until it's kind of submitted.
Yeah. And I understand that. I guess what I could want to be sure of is that when, and obviously both have worked on this already.
I haven't looked at it really at all yet. I don't want to get into anything that's relatively small, that's going to cause somebody to say, "Well, you changed something, now we have to go back to the drawing board." So it seems like when we do take this up a second time for approval, we really ought to be looking at it and sort of with the idea that we don't want to get into making significant changes of any kind, because it's going to compromise the process potentially.
Right. And I think that's what the policy subcommittee did, yeah.
And to give you some feedback, so...
Yeah. Can you move the mic a little bit closer for all things?
Please go.
Yeah.
That's fine. So to give you some background, so Kathy had done a lot of work on this policy prior to even coming before the policy subcommittee. Went through, got some input from DESI, and when we started reviewing it was, you know, it was rough, because it was a conglomeration of a lot of different inputs. And so we first did is, we worked to kind of, you know, some formatting and make it read, more readable, and consolidating some of, some of the things down. What I'll say about this policy is we try to separate policy and procedure typically. This is one of those situations where it's kind of one of the same because of the regs. And so the format, if you, if you brought up the regulations, the format of this follows the regulations. So in the parentheses, you'll say, you'll say forty-six point oh one. That's the regulate, that's the section of the regulations that it pertains to. And there are entire sections of this policy that are actually copies and paste from, from the regulations. So even though some of the definitions might have a grammatical anomaly, we're not...
To your, to your question.
We're, we're not, we're not changing it.
That's what they want to say, that's what I'm saying.
We're not going to tell DESI that they're, that they don't know how to define, define their, define their own thing. So the entire definition section, things, things like that. You know, so as you said, we, we went back and forth a couple times, we met three times on it. And the last time, we got from, from DESI, they, the person that reviewed it said that the current version, they liked it, because we, we did add some more of the things that were in the, the regulation.
In other words, go light on any concerns or whatnot.
Well, so that there are, there are substantive places where we indulged and, and going well beyond. So if you, if you bring up the, when you review it, if you bring up the regulations and the policy, you'll see, it'll be pretty obvious where we copy and pasted from that, and then other parts where we talked about, like, the response to intervention in those, all those processes that we have and the trainings, those are, you know, homegrown things that are, that were put in by Kathy and, and company, so. Like I said, so the, like, the first two sections are pretty much from the regulations, the, the purpose and definitions.
You know, Paul, I'm not worried about trying to walk through it now. I think I, what I really wanted to do, because I knew this was a first read, is just make sure, under, make sure I understood the framework that we're dealing with, because I think it, you guys have obviously spent a lot of time on it, which I appreciate for all of you.
Well, so, but what I want to go through is, you know, if there's only two sections you really need to look at, I'll tell you what those are.
Okay.
As opposed to, you know, so... So, um, as opposed to, you know, so, and then the third is, is again, a copy and paste from the regulations. Um, uh, and then, uh, section four is really where, if you want to review, um, that is a lot of what, uh, our own district content is in section four. Um, as, let's keep on going, section four is a, is a somewhat long section. Um, and then, section five is kind of a combination, uh, of regs. And so, section four and section five are something you can definitely look at. Um, so those are really the only two that are substantively different or augmented, uh, with district content.
Excellent. So, it's a first read, there's no vote, it's just everybody's chance to ask their clarification questions or raise concerns. Um, so, you know, hearing none, we'll, we'll move this till next time, and if something comes up in your review about it in between, we can talk about it next time.
Yeah, and, and thanks again, Kathy.
Yeah, thanks.
She spent a lot of time before it even came to, uh, to the committee, so.
It really was a collaborative effort, I, I think you're being kind towards me, but, um, I, I do want to give a nod. Uh, the subcommittee did work very hard, and it was very much appreciated. Sometimes when you look at something for a long period of time and have many reiterations of it, you lose perspective, so bringing in that perspective of where we can improve the language was incredibly helpful.
Excellent, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to jump down for the student travel request, the AHS Model UN, um, your variety of trips here. And you're getting your requests in way in advance.
Love that.
This is awesome. And it, you know, I've been following you a little bit on Twitter, it looks like you guys are doing amazing. So, tell us some more about what's happening. Who wants to?
Mr. President?
Don't be shocked, Mr. President, I love it.
So, my name is Shrejen Shrivatsa, I was just elected as the Model UN president.
Congratulations.
About a week ago, once again, and I think everyone else wants to introduce themselves too.
Yes, please.
Hi, I'm Sid Arvind, I am a current freshman. I was elected the trip organizer of the Model UN club.
Welcome.
My name is Eli Pribula, I'm a junior, and I was elected treasurer of the Model UN club again.
Excellent, welcome.
I'm Irene Katalachenko, I was just elected as secretary, and I'm in my junior year.
Hi, I'm Adora Lei, uh, I'm going to be a senior next year, and I was elected as the public relations officer.
Excellent, well, welcome to all of you, and tell us about what's been happening and where you're headed.
Yeah, well, just to start off, a, a little bit more about our club. So, what is the Model UN club? So, uh, first and foremost, we're an after-school club, but our main goal is to make sure that students know more about debate and, as well as about diplomacy. We meet every day after school on Mondays, although I think we're switching it to Wednesdays next year. And so, there we have discussions and debates and arguments about international issues as well as global events. A few of our, uh, recent subjects include the Syrian civil war, um, the European Union, as well as de-Norcalization. So, we kind of know what we're talking about, and we're glad to discuss it with other students our age as well. Um, we go on a few conferences, especially last year we went on a few, including Exeter, Lowell, St. John's, as well as our, um, Los Angeles trip, which you guys approved, so thank you very much. Um, at the conferences, uh, it's very formal, there are a lot of parliamentary procedures as well as, uh, discussions, and, uh, as well as formal wear, it's required, which is why we kind of look like fish out of water with our, uh, with our business casual, and, um, yeah, I can pass it on to Ira. Oh, thank you. I'll pass it off to Ira to talk about the debates.
Um, so, at our conferences that we went to, multiple of our members came back with awards. I think at one conference, three of our members came back with different awards. I think that just about all of them came back, except for LA, which is a lot harder. However, the freshmen had learned a lot especially, and they were very excited about it, and can't wait for our next trips. That's out-of-state as perspectives, that those places are a lot different, and it was really interesting. Um, next year, we're also going to be hosting a conference of our own with another school called AMSA, and we look forward to that as well.
Excellent, thank you.
Where's that going to be, will that be at the high school?
Yeah, high school.
Oh, great.
Hello, my name is Sid Arvind. I'll be going over the basic logistical planning that has been done so far, along with Shrejen, who is currently passing out packets that you can follow, which I believe he already has. Being a freshman in the club was absolutely an ex, an amazing experience, and I know I can confidently say that for all of the freshmen. Coming out of the middle school, I, we have never seen an extracurricular be taken so confidently, ser, so seriously by student-related leadership. Most of the opportunities that we were given in the middle school were mostly adult-run and seeing students who are just two years older, plan trips across the country was astounding. Eliza Kalenjen was also a freshman that was elected as the vice president, who unfortunately had another commitment tonight. I know I can speak on her behalf, behalf, as well as that we can't wait to learn from our upperclassmen on how to manage so many details in a club.
All right. So, I already introduced myself, I'm currently a junior at Ashland High School, and I was elected as the president. Um, because there was no position called trip organizer a year ago, I kind of took that position along with Irene, Eli, and Adora here. Um, we didn't realize we needed one until like a month ago, so we added one. Um, we can't wait to hand over the reins to Sid over here, um, and we're eager to start working with him. The Los Angeles trip was a ton of fun, um, Ms. Henry can also attest, he was a chaperone along with Ms. Burnier. Um, it went by without a hiccup despite it being mostly student-organized. Um, we hope to reproduce this in the upcoming year, because we have a ton of conferences planned and a ton of trips. With that, I thank you for, thank you all for letting us present tonight, and I would like to pass the mic over to Sid again. He has done such an impressive job planning trips so far, which you will see, considering it only has been a week after getting elected, so.
On this front page, we're looking at the information slash commitment form. On the top of the page, you have the club's contact information, information about the club and our meetings, and then a contact information form. On the next page, you can see we have our local one-day competitions. Today, we are hoping to get approved, the very first trip on this list, as it is, as it is our out-of-state being in New Hampshire. The other four local one-day trips are all in-state, so we plan on getting those approved at the start of the twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty school year. We will announce the final amount of money due for the conference between forty to sixty dollars once you receive this commitment form, and thus will know how many students, the cost of the bus will be split by. We will email the price for the local conference by the end of September of twenty-nineteen at the very latest. Towards the bottom of the same page, we have information about Metro West Model UN, which is our own hosted conference at AHS. Although it is not a trip, and is, is fact, in fact, it is a fundraiser that is free for all of our members who attend, it is on this forum, so we know exactly who is going to be there. On the next page are multi-day conferences around the region. These are the mediums between the Miami trip and our one-day conferences. They offer a chance to travel as well as a chance to participate in the multi-day debate. But, due to their proximity to home, they're often a more cost-effective alternative. Unlike the Miami trip and the one-day conferences, those who choose to go to the conferences on this page will be required to arrange their own transportation. We save bus money for our one-day trips. We hope to get both of our local multi-day conferences approved today. The first one is in Lowell, Massachusetts, the price is fifty dollars. Although it is overnight, there's no hotel involved, so everybody can drive to the conference each day. The first day of the trip is November eighth, which is the early release day before Veterans Weekend, which would be missed for students who choose to go on the trip. The second local multi-day conference is, is Eagleman in Boston, Massachusetts. This is a very prestigious conference in Massachusetts, and I hope that many serious Model UN clubs like AMSA and Dover Sherbin attend it year after year. This conference, unlike the one in UMass Lowell, requires us to stay at our hotel since it is such a rigorous schedule with a forty-hour simulation over three days. Although the first day of the trip is a Friday, we will only be leaving after school ends, so no school is missed. If you flip the page, there is information on our Miami trip, which we also hope to get approved tonight. We do miss three days of school for this trip, but these trips are always an amazing experience for both students and chaperones. Plus, the educational value that we get from a conference that is so far is astounding. I personally experienced this on, in the Los Angeles conference. Although it was a very rigorous experience, my friends and I enjoyed it nevertheless as a highlight of the trip. The last pages of the information forum just has information for parents and possible financial aid. The signature page, as well as our events other than our trips, like fundraisers that the club participates in. We will be collecting this commitment slash information form for our members at the beginning of next year, so we know exactly what trips each of our members would like to go on. If you flip past the information forum, you are able to see a document that Shrejen made last year, where we can calculate the exact cost of our local conferences, once we know our exact numbers. The next page is a blank chaperone signup sheet. This is for chaperones to get a general overview of each trip and sign up if, if they are interested. I know Ms. Hanson is interested in going on the majority of the trips, as well as Ms. Henry, and we are very grateful and excited that they are supportive of the club. We've gone through all of the paperwork for our local conferences and our multi-day local conferences. So, before moving on to the Miami trip, I would like to ask if there are any questions about the Exeter trip in October, Lowell trip in November, and Boston trip in March?
Opening it up to the board? I don't think you've left anything unanswered. You are very thorough, I remember that from the last time that you were here, so impressed. I wish I could hire you to organize my life.
I don't, I don't know what to do, Jim, I'm not complaining to you about people not, not meeting the deadlines.
I know, I know, I know.
Right, you're following all the rules.
How many teams typically participate in the local conferences?
Um, I think about fifty to seventy, depending on the size.
All right. And it sounds like you did great, you had a great year, and good experiences, and you're getting yourselves known out there, and we're very proud to have you representing Ashland, you guys are amazing. And, and when you're local enough, I'd love to come watch. Do, do any of them get recorded?
Oh.
We could record our own.
Well, we can go to the ones that they're going to host.
The one, the one that you're hosting, yeah, I think it would be great if, uh, yeah. It would, it would be great if we could, if we could come see the one that's, that you're hosting. I would love to, yeah.
If, if you could, if you could make sure to send us a, a note to remind us of the, especially the one we're host, we're hosting, that would be great.
Yeah, a, any questions?
I think you have something more to say.
Yeah, yeah, we're good, we have any questions, so you can continue.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
Okay.
And we only don't have questions, not because we're not interested, but because.
No, no, I thought she thought we were done. I thought he needed to say something more.
All right. We found a hotel called Doral Inn and Suites, they have airport shuttles as well as free breakfast, and are located near Florida International University, which is where the conference is taking place. If you flip past the chaperone signup sheets, you can see the email we sent to, to the hotel front desk to obtain a contract at a competitive price. Then, if you flip again, they've agreed to honor our press request, which you can see on the initiated contract. The next pages are an initiated invoice for ground transportation in Miami for the days we are there. A company called Sensation Tours has agreed to give us a per-person cost opposed to a cost for an entire bus. This makes it easier to calculate costs for the trip.
Does it mean you'd be sharing a bus with other people, or would you have it to yourself?
Yeah.
So, question for you, Jim, is, is this one of the, uh, already-approved vendors?
No, because it's out-of-state, we'd have to, but, but it's easier to do.
All right. The next page is a rough itinerary. Although it is not fully completed, we have just spaces where we have the buses for a few hours, so we can at-site see them. All of the ground transportation in Miami are hourly services and not just point-to-point transfers. That way, if we need to change plans during the trip, like if it rains when we plan on going to the beach, we can do that without a problem. The next few pages have our cost breakdowns for the Miami trip. These are all subject to change, but we aimed the price to be higher. Notably, we estimated the price of the flight to be three hundred and seventy-five dollars, so we can't accurately, accurately predict the cost of the flight this early. Also, on the cost breakdown, I made sure to account for hotel taxes and the driver's tip for ground transportation as well. And with that, we have gone through all of the planning that we have done so far with the Miami trip. Although it is not completely planned, like, flights haven't, um, flights haven't released their exact schedules yet, this is the general gist. Irene and Eli are going to talk about what exactly Model UN conferences look like, Adora and Eli are going to give some reasons why we deserve these trips. And finally, Adora is going to talk about how these trips are a large stepping stone for the club. Before I pass the mic on to the others, would I like, um, I would like to take any questions on any logistical concerns about any of our trips?
We're good, you may continue.
Yeah.
Yeah, these are always the, the most well-prepared, uh, requests that we see, uh, so.
You should be the model of that for everyone that comes before us.
Yeah.
Model Model UN.
Model Model.
Yeah, I was going to say.
That's what I said, can I hire you?
So, conferences usually consist of five major parts. We first arrive, and they'll have an introduction period where, uh, whoever's hosting will introduce all the different parts and talk a little bit about it, and do all the formal stuff they need to. And then after that, they'll split up into their different groups, because there's usually different debate topics, and you'll be put in different ones. Um, after that, they'll open up the first caucus, and they'll debate out what they want to, and then they'll vote to close to go to lunch. After lunch, they vote to open again, and they discuss the second part of the caucus. They close again, and then they usually have a conclusion. If it's a multi-day trip, then there's no conclusion, you just go home.
The main thing that sets Model UN debate apart from regular teenage people yelling at each other is we use parliamentary procedure, so there's a chair at the front of the room, um, and everybody, it's one speaker at a time, there's, um, a very impressive amount of decorum when you're there, it's humbling almost. Um, and it's great, because it gives us a chance to, um, like, hear from other people and disagree and compromise within a certain framework. So, we're at a point where, um, everybody's sharing vastly different ideas, but it's not an issue, because we're able to stick to parliamentary procedure and keep going, and draft papers, and revise them, and get to a point where we feel comfortable voting on, uh, our papers.
Right, that's a skill you'll take for the rest of your life. Yeah.
So, just to wrap things up, because I'm sure you guys are kind of bored of the logistics already. Um, so, for us, uh, these trips are very beneficial to the club, and it's a huge stepping stone to become a legitimate source of student discussion. We believe that knowing the views of these different regions and these different local areas, it'll only help us develop our own debate, as well as develop our perspectives and opinions about the world and about our country. Um, although the trips are pretty fun for us, uh, they're also very educational for us to have these new and very exciting experiences. And rest assured, the Model UN club will represent the AHS school well, and, uh, we will make sure to be respectful as well as have a lot of pride, uh, for our school. Uh, thank you so much for listening to our, uh, to our packet and to our, uh, concerns and facts, and we really hope that we can have your approval, thank you.
It's a standing ovation.
Yeah. Great job. All right, so, any, four separate motions for the different trips, okay. I, I didn't hear any questions or concerns, so I think we're going to go right to our motions, because I have a feeling they're going to be approved. Right, who wants to make the first motion?
Is there a reason why we can't do them all?
Do them all. Wrap them all in?
Yeah, so just.
Want me to keep reading all of them?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll read them all. Okay, I move to approve the student travel request from Ashland High School Model UN Club to travel to Exeter, New Hampshire, October twenty-seventh, two thousand and nineteen. Can I just combine it?
Yeah.
To travel to Lowell, Mass., November eighth through ninth, two thousand and nineteen, to travel to Miami, Florida, March fifth through the ninth, twenty twenty, and to travel to Boston, Mass., March twentieth to the twenty-second, twenty twenty.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so.
So, we pass, you can go.
You're going, keep us posted, please. We, um, we're so proud of you, and keep up the good work.
Excellent work.
Come visit us anytime.
Thank you for coming.
Seriously, well, you know, if you learn something interesting along the way, I mean, we have students come in to educate us or to show us their talents or whatever. You don't have to just come, I mean, it's, it's not like you want to be here, I'm sure, but what I'm saying is that we would love to hear anything that you want to share that you learn along the way. Um, please feel free to get in touch with me, and I'll put you on the agenda. All right?
All right, great, thank you.
Thank you, I'll do some more.
Good night, good night. Thanks for being the chaperones and the, the teacher advisor, thank you.
Thank you, too.
Okay, who gets to follow that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thorough.
Well, you better be as prepared as they were.
I think you didn't quite dress up to their standards.
Where's the decorum, Mr. Regan?
So, I will say that we had our graduation this morning, and that we had a wonderful graduating class of about seventy students, um, and it wasn't too hot, so that was nice. Um, and it was a great celebration, so that is why the attire is here, and I think Mr. Regan just came from the second-grade barbecue, so.
We're just teasing.
That might be there. Um, so, we're here to, um, present. So, we're here to present to you all of our accomplishments on our action steps towards the school improvement plan from two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen, and then share with you some of our anticipated goals as we're waiting to kind of finalize the blueprint for strategic plans for the public school district, which will be identified over the summer.
We hope so.
Okay. So, we are a joint site council committee. We have five members participating for Pitt Way for the preschool. Lynell Benikowski and Rima Patnick are our parent representatives. And then we have Jill Galick and Meg Brown, who's here with us tonight, as the teacher representatives. So, we'll briefly go over the goals that were established by Mrs. White and the committee from two thousand and eighteen and nineteen. We had three goal areas. The first was that the Pitt Way School staff will review the physical education curriculum and align it with current mass standards and objectives for physical development. We accomplished a lot this year in regards to that goal. We aligned the units with the curriculum frameworks as a professional practice goal with a team of three teachers that use that for evidence towards their educator-teacher eval. We met with the school PT to discuss different accommodations and modifications to the list of activities so that all of our students could actively participate in that. We developed a resource binder for activities associated with each unit and created a materials list and instructions, which we utilized some of our PTO end-of-the-year funds to purchase some of those materials that will accompany the different units. And the three teachers that developed this curriculum presented it to staff in May two thousand and nineteen during one of our professional development workshops. And then we've already planned professional development workshops in August two thousand and nineteen at the start of school to kind of roll out how we're gonna implement that across the nineteen-twenty school year.
Let you go with goal two.
Our second goal was staff and administration will identify, develop, and implement support systems to assist students, faculty, and families in maintaining healthy physical and mental well-being. So, we, different teams of teachers kind of throughout the school attacked it from different ways. Two teachers developed a needs-based service to send out to parents to target kind of where they're looking for support. Another team of teachers developed cooldown corners in their classrooms as their professional development goal and they introduced some mindfulness into activities surrounding rest, so yoga, meditation. We had a PBIS reboot in the middle of the year, a B-Day. We're talking about being safe and being kind. We got all new stickers. We dressed up in black and yellow. Kind of revamped that. We did an in-house professional development on self-care, the power of yet and that growth mindset, both for how we can teach our students and how we can use it ourselves. We, two teachers went to a professional development opportunity for the Pyramid Model, which is a early childhood professional development run by the state to focus on that trauma-informed care. And they actually didn't, they then came as a follow-up visit and gave some suggestions, which was really cool. And then a few classrooms started up some parent centers where they were reflecting and promoting activities, involvement, and resources for parents.
And the third goal was that research would be conducted to identify an RTI model that was sustainable for the needs of our preschool-aged students. All the other buildings in the district have an existing RTI model, so that was a goal of the staff, to really utilize the resources in the district to look at how they do their information packet and how the teachers will present information on students that they may have some questions or concerns in a certain area of development. And we actually were able to roll that out this year. So, there was another team of teachers that worked on that as a professional development goal and they modeled it after the Warren School so that those files will also be able to transition up to the K-through-two building, but obviously had to modify a lot of the indicators and measures because it needed to be developmentally appropriate for three-to-five-year-olds. And they presented that to the teachers, who then revised it to make sure that we were hitting all areas of development, utilizing our assessments of teaching strategies gold as well as the curriculum that our children are being exposed to. And they went live in January with the RTI packets and that process with great documentation on the Google Drive so that that could be shared as kids transitioned. And the team was able to meet on four students that had some different concerns or questions to think about how we could better service and support them in the classroom. And that process went very successful in the spring with some follow-ups in different interventions and data-informed instruction that has allowed them to be more successful in the classroom. So, looking forward to goals for next year, we just need to finalize kind of the language to make sure we're aligning with the strategic plan. That gross motor curriculum was a two-year plan, so they did all the development this past year and then next year we'll be rolling it out with some intentional PD time and then some expectations and some evidence about how our kids are accessing the curriculum and making gains in that growth motor curriculum development and those benchmarks. So, we have the in-service curriculum mapping and also monitoring progress and feedback through that same team of teachers.
Our social-emotional well-being, we're also hoping to continue next year. The Pyramid Model training offers kind of, I mean, it's similar to RTI where the bottom of the pyramid is every staff member, so we're working hard to try and get into the next cohort or consortium to get that training. Developing some parent workshops for needs-based topics, like the ones that were identified through surveys this year. And then we're looking for some SEL support through different professional development, whether it be the Pyramid Model or others.
And then the third area will be family and community engagement. We started with parent coffees this year in the survey. Our PTO and ASH PAC have been very involved as well. So, thinking about developing a workshop schedule that we can also tape and then either email it out or put it on a social media platform that parents can get some information. Staff have really creative ideas about parent educational little one-minute clips on making choices and helping with those challenging things as getting out of the house in the morning and getting to school and doing some video modeling of our staff modeling some situations. So, it's not crossing confidential concerns with students and we'll be modeling that for staff. And then also changing our communication efforts a little bit and trying to reach all parents and utilizing some different resources for materials translated into different languages, changing some class blogs and how we're communicating across the board to be a little more systematic and aligned with the district would be a nice goal for us to start the school year out. So, that's our goals. Moving on, we're pretty proud of what we accomplished this year and we are looking forward, the staff are really on board with making these steps on these next three kind of areas along with the school improvement plan.
Any questions, comments? Keep up the good work.
Seems pretty thorough.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in.
At Warren, sorry. At Warren School, we have seven members of our site council. We do have another member who is present at each meeting, but a non-voting member in Kate Altman. But the rest of our committee, John Brenniger, Claire Goss, Pam Sage, Donna Shaw, Juana Segal, and Daria Tucker are instrumental members and how they communicate with their constituents as well by talking to our families and our staff members. This year, our first goal was around aligning our K-two curriculum instruction and assessments in ELA and math. With the leadership of our curriculum leaders and liaisons, we were able to make some great adjustments in mathematics to allow for more logical growth and sequential skills that match what our students' needs were. That also involved that assessments needed to be modified as well to match as these skills were being taught in a slightly different order. That work continued and we saw some great results from our students with their learning increasing during the year from the teachers seeing the impact of a better-designed instructional pathway for our children in mathematics. Through our literacy committee, and that's a committee under Dr. Viera, the group has made some great work in looking at other programs, looking at other schools, and you'll be hearing more about that in the future. But that's also some of the work that informed our group of how we're looking at our ELA instruction. By now having full-day kindergarten for all students, all of our kindergarten students received the full curriculum for the first time at Warren School. Our first and second grade teachers are very excited about this because not having students that have that gap. And because we do spread our students out each year, we're excited to see what the results will be of this, that every child coming out of our kindergarten programming has had a consistent education opportunity. At this point, we're seeing some strength in our student data for ELA and mathematics and our teachers are now using this to do more small-group planning and looking at the instructional pieces that are needed to help students make the most growth. Goal two focused on promotion of social-emotional well-being for students and staff. Over last summer, twenty-one staff members completed the four-day responsive classroom training. This summer, ten additional staff members will be taking that training. Throughout the year, all of our teachers were trained on some of the tenants of responsive classroom. We used our professional development time to work with all staff members. So, by that, it wasn't just our teaching staff, but also our ESPs, so that we could have consistent language and expectations for our children. And it was balancing the PBIS expectations with responsive classrooms because there were a few components that didn't match up, such as identifying one student who is really shown above everyone else and putting that power back to a classroom of where they're making those decisions in an individual room. We worked closely with the staff over the course of the year, using a text called "The Power of Our Words" and talked about it with our staff members about how we say things is critically important and the intonation that we have, our body language, and we modeled that. We had a lot of role-playing with that as well and that was highly regarded by the staff for our feedback and our surveys from the ESPs and the teachers felt that it was some of the most powerful PD that they've experienced and immediately making some changes in their classrooms. Our council has continued work with mindfulness groups, banana splits, social cell groups, other groups looking at the whole group and small-group settings. This year, we charged, our council is to look at specific data to see what's the impact on our students. And we were able to see improvements in regulation from the movement groups that we're having each day. As the year continued and this instruction continued, we saw that students were having less problems in the classroom based on these movements and the instruction that was given. In addition to this, as part of the responsive classroom shift, every classroom began their day with a morning meeting. There was two exceptions in second grade that started by having an outdoor recess and then coming in and immediately having their morning meeting, but it was no longer where they were going to a special art, music library, so forth. The morning meetings were highly regarded by students and staff as just a better way of getting to know each other in the classroom. Children knowing children, adults knowing the children better and being able to intervene and support as needed throughout the year. The staff also recognized that the shift from our PBS of waiting for those whole-school assemblies allowed them to celebrate and recognize on a daily basis in the classroom and just seeing the response from our students of how much they enjoyed that. Goal three of creating opportunities to welcome and inform families to the Warren and the Ashland community in five ways to recognize the various cultures represented at the Warren School. Our classrooms continue to communicate and focus classroom instruction each week on the events and cultures of their classroom. We invite parent volunteers to come in and share as they are the expert of their traditions and their family. We as well started something different this year, similar to the Mindes School of where they have their phone calls that go home. But we charged, not just from Kate and myself to organize that because we wanted to see a broader impact, we asked every teacher to communicate one great thing at least once a month with every child. So, teachers worked with making phone calls, sending notes, doing different pieces, and then sharing out during our staff meetings about their results. I was very surprised to learn that phone calls were not highly effective and that often people were leaving messages or not able to leave voicemails. And when we got feedback from our families, they actually preferred the notes that were going home. Emails were done as well, but the most highly successful was personal note cards that were being sent. Also, our site council shared resources for the various cultural events that staff to be used in their classrooms and that were shared out with families. Goal four was creating greater opportunities for differentiated professional development. As I mentioned, we talked about the professional development for ELA and math that was looking at, that was very grade-level specific and was responding to the teacher needs that they were bringing forward during our meetings. Our social-emotional learning activities was all tied back to responsive classroom throughout the year. And that is with the goal, by the fall of two thousand and twenty-one, all staff members, sorry, fall of two thousand and twenty, all staff members will have had that training and they're having those pieces. You'll hear more about our goals, where we're going next year, our next steps for that. The consistency of our language was also powerful, no pun intended, from the text, the power of our words. And the staff just taking that moment to sit back and hear about, when we give redirections, how do we give that to make sure we're very explicit and that it's subjective how we're talking to students about what we'd like to see and that it can be done in a friendly, positive manner. As we looked at our goals for next year, a big piece is coming from our literacy steering committee of looking at what professional development and changes will be happening for our ELA instruction in kindergarten, first grade, and second grade. Our math alignment will continue with close examination of the student data and how to move forward with more small-group instruction to meet individual student needs and to have that challenge occur as well, not just looking at our students that need that remediation and reteaching. Common planning time will be returning thanks to the school committee's support and the town's support of our budget by adding music to a full-time, so kindergarten will have that experience as well. It's allowing our teachers, so every other week, half of a grade level will be able to meet for a forty-minute planning period. And that's where they will be looking at their student data and talking about how do we best meet the needs of all of our learners? Do we need to share some resources between rooms as well and share some instruction between classrooms? Goal two is continuing to work with our responsive classroom training for all. It's really grown a great deal and where we've seen some excellent ideas coming from our staff, one of which being Teresa McCarrick, who scours grants and has done an amazing job to find a sizable grant that's going to be adding sensory paths to our school. So, this is going to be adding yet another social-emotional learning tool that will be installed in our hallways that students will be able to access after being taught how to use these tools, but they'll be able to use them independently in the hall as a first and second grader, beginning-of-the-year kindergartner, obviously they'll have support to use these pieces. As well, another piece that will be coming directly from responsive classroom is closing circles. So, this year, because only twenty-one of our staff members had the full training, I didn't feel it was fair to have all of the expectations of the program, but now they will be also ending their each day with a meeting where they talk about the day, the successes, some of the challenges, and things for improvement the next day. Our site council also wants to begin our year with a survey for goal three to determine what families would like for information, because we still have that question of saying, are we providing the right information to our families? Are we answering the right questions? Are we providing helpful information that's guiding them in working with their own children? They've decided that they will be having presentations created for families based on responsive classroom as well for that shift. These presentations will also include some if-then, so if your child is using this phrase, so a phrase that came back over and over to our parents from the council that they were being asked in the community is saying, what do I do when my child says "what the", and they pause, and they don't know that that's not an appropriate phrase? And us listing materials and resources for families to say, here are tools and other redirections that you can use. How the site council is looking at this right now is to create video series so that for parents that can't attend, and that will also include closed captions to allow for support for all of our families, whether it's our deaf population or also for families that need language translation so that everyone can access this. And as I mentioned previously about goal one, professional development and that differentiation, is we're really looking to hone in on responsive classroom and taking it to our next steps as well as the ELA adjustments that we're waiting for the steering committee.
Questions, comments?
It's very thorough.
Yeah. Again, very thorough. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thanks to all the site councils, great stuff.
Thank you.
Good stuff.
Thank you, Pete.
Hello, Kelly.
Hi, everybody. I'll take a minute to thank our site council members. I think I have an old list at the back of your plan there. This is our third year of a three-year plan, so it's all new members that served this year. For parents, we had Heidi Kaufman, MJ Paxey, Carrie McKetty, Alison Maury, and Teri Spielberg. Staff, we had Alisa Egan, Mary Beth Galant, Jen Shields, Lynn Rabenowitz, and Janet Toomey. And for students that worked with us this year were Olivia Beaton, Josie Kaufman, Neha Shabir, E.J. Smither, and Alison Maury, all great resources. And then obviously Lauren Carrero and Erin LaChapelle, as well as Lori, often joining us as non-voting members. So, under the action items that we worked on this year, I just put in italics some of the things that we were proud of or things that we felt we had accomplished, so I'll just highlight a couple of them for each goal. In the area, we were talking about equity and student growth and looking at our schedule was a big part of the work we did this year. Redesigning a schedule that took away the lab periods for most of our science classes, adding in what we're gonna, not sure we're calling it yet, but an X-block next year. And looking at how to finally get some common planning time that's been on the agenda for a while for us, so we spent a lot of time talking about how we're gonna make that happen next year and have decided to look at just doing it by department and rotating through what departments. At this time, our schedule looks like we've got it done for English and potentially one other department next year. And we have been able to do a lot of pairing certain courses together so that those teachers are having some time together. Also in that area, we did add Edgenuity this year and have had a lot of students take advantage of it and we'll use it. It's an online resource, similar to virtual high school, which we've been using, more cost-effective, and we wanted to give it a year this year to see... And we, um, wanted to give it a year this year to see how, um, the students liked it, um, and it's, it's, it's been a good tool. It's worked well for us for a couple of different, um, struggling students, students who've been out of school, as well as some students, um, that we were not able to offer, um, AP courses, um, because of staffing, um, restraints. In our goal two, looking at, um, well-being, um, we had a lot of time this year talking about what we wanted to, how we wanted to go about looking at the, um, our portrait of a graduate, which is one of the things that we need to do for NIASC. Um, in a couple of years, we've, um, spent a lot of time looking at what other schools were doing, um, developing our own surveys, et cetera. We are gonna wait to roll that out. Um, we had a goal of doing some of that this year, but decided to wait to roll it out till once the blueprint was completed next year. Um, and again, that X block schedule, um, is going to play a role, not only in, um, the first goal, in reaching some of our student, student needs in terms of struggling students, um, offering more opportunities for students. Uh, but we also, um, intend to use that time to, um, increase the, um, opportunities to build connectedness among students. Um, in our third goal area, um, where we're, um, really looking at our partnerships with our families and community, we continue to look for opportunities and have discussions about how we could get our students more connected to opportunities within the community. Um, we continue to work with the Ashland Business Association, and I think, um, make that connection with the Rotary Club this year to bring our first ever Reality Fair, um, and we definitely hope to build on that next year. It was a great experience for our seniors. Um, we started discussions on how we're gonna expand it or adjust it, um, next year, um, to, um, and bringing that financial literacy piece for all students. We did have the entire senior class receive, um, a three-day instruction on financial literacy prior to, um, participating in the Reality Fair, um, and one of the positive outcomes we saw in that was all the connections that we made with the community, um, throughout the whole process of setting up the fair. And then our fourth goal in terms of looking at educator, um, excellence, um, one of the things that we worked on this year was kind of redesigning how we do some faculty meetings. Um, we had a group of our faculty members that, um, we called the Innovation Team that, um, typically met, um, in a different fashion, in a different spot, um, during our faculty meetings to, um, talk about a lot of cross, uh, collaboration, and how they could increase, um, the use of innovation in all our classrooms, um, and included members from all departments. Um, and we also redesigned our leadership team meetings, um, to make them open to all staff, um, and it varied from meeting to meeting whether or not we had just our, um, department liaisons who were required to be there. And depending on the topic, we tended to pick a topic rather than, um, make it more of a business oriented meeting. Um, and lots of other staff members would come and be part of those conversations depending on the topic. Um, so those are the highlights of things that we were proud of for this year. Um, and then moving forward, we spent some time just looking at the draft of the blueprint, um, and looking at some action items that we, um, would anticipate incorporating into, um, what our plan would look like for next year. Um, we did not, um, specifically develop wording yet, again, waiting for the blueprint. Um, but I think looking at goal number one in terms of academic excellence, um, really developing our portrait of the graduate will be a big focus for the coming school year. And we also had a lot of conversation in our goal for next year now that we have at least implemented common planning time for the English department. They're gonna pilot, um, doing some cross-level work. We've paired some college prep and honors classes together, and those two teachers are gonna be planning together, um, to have some, some lessons that will be separated, and some will, they were, will, um, mix the classes together and divide the groups up maybe based, based on interest, or they're, they're planning a whole bunch of different activities as a model for how we might, um, work across levels for the students. Um, and, um,
That's a question that comes.
Yeah, definitely.
What's the goal of doing that?
Um, part of it is to look at, um, you know, our current leveling system. We have a couple of different CP levels, and we've been having discussions about whether or not, um, um, we can effectively reach the needs of all students, um, with fewer levels, um, which I think the belief is that we can. And also really, um, the belief that we want to give student more, students more choice and, and interest. And, um, you know, one of the things they're talking about is maybe doing some book club type things, so that, you know, students in a CP and honors class could be choosing one book or another to read and be broken up, um, in activities around that.
Thank you.
So, so we do have one department currently does not have different levels. So the CP one, CP two, honors AP, so we've combined in our world language department. They don't have a CP one level, it's just CP.
CP and honors.
CP two, honors and AP.
Yeah, and our unified arts teachers would say that they don't, you know, they have a lim- limited amount of leveling. So for priority two, in terms of looking at the well-being of all, um, one of the, um, goals of our X block, as I said, was to really look at that piece of how we make sure every student is connected in the building. Um, and that's also, you know, a priority for NIASC. So we hope to use some of that time, which is probably gonna be in the half hour range a day, um, to look at what we're doing with the freshmen with our peer leader program. Um, finding a way to, you know, match students with teachers. Hoping to start with some surveys and really look at what works, you know, possibly matching students by interest for, you know, one of those days of cycle, that type of thing, so. Um, we'll really spend next year trying out some activities. I think it's probably the thing that the staff is most nervous about, um, as we all are when there's change. But we hope to, you know, we hope that they're willing to take risks with us and try some new things out, and, um, that'll be beneficial to all students, um, in the long run. Um, one of the things in looking at the, the blueprint draft was faculty, um, at Site Council really wanted to look at increasing the number of, uh, team building, things that we do as a faculty throughout the year. So we'll include that, um, and we, we feel like we need to maybe make a more conscious effort than we have. I think we do a lot with our Metro West, um, survey data, um, but we want to make a more conscious effort of incorporating that into what we do, um, with our students. Um, and in terms of engaging our families and partners, um, we did away with one of our, um, parent nights this year, um, feeling it was, we had a, you know, parent conference night where we were only, teachers could only reach twelve parents, um, in the night. And when they have a hundred parents that they need to see, we realized we need to find a better way to reach our community. Um, so we are looking at whether or not we do, you know, a student-led evening where they're showcasing, um, the work they're doing and the successes they're having. We talked about, you know, some of our EL students who recently presented at, um, a PD for staff about their experience, talked about they would love to build on that and do something that would bring in the community to talk about some of the work they're doing. So we're, um, hoping, yeah, that'll be sometime in March next year, so we will be spending the fall looking at what that's gonna look like. And then we're continuing to have conversations about, you know, bringing more real-life instruction into plan, um, with the graduates for next steps. Um, and then in terms of our, um, fostering educator excellence, two of the things that we've talked about we'd like to, um, do is, we had a lot of conversation about increasing more opportunities to discuss teaching with high school students. And we did our first teacher signing day this year with Desi, and Desi was doing it, encouraging it. Um, and there's been a lot of talk in the last couple of years, the kids wanting to bring back that concept of having graduates come in and talk to them. And, um, so we've, we've talked about looking at doing something like that, again, whether we do it on a, um, career basis and have, um, similar to some of the evening programming that's happening, um, but looking at that next year. Um, and then we've talked about really exploring, um, counseling and making sure counselors have some, um, more structured time with students. And that came out of actually Karen Spilka's advisory group, where it was actually something they worked on regionally. It came up as a concern, like, how can we really, um, build the role of the counselor? Um, and our counselors are looking for things that they could do to, um, build their connections with the students. Um, and I think the schedule changes are going to help with that as well. Any questions?
Questions, comments?
No.
Great, great stuff going on.
Thanks. Good stuff.
Go bees.
Thanks, Kelly.
See y'all.
Thanks, Kelly.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kelly. Thanks, everyone for staying. Free to go.
Be free to go.
Wonderful.
Thanks.
To all the site councils, thank you.
Tomorrow, one o'clock at my office. We'll see you.
You're in trouble.
Good night, thank you.
Later, good night.
See ya. Had to throw it in there. They, no, not everyone responded.
Hint, hint?
Hint, hint.
Yeah.
It wasn't an optional.
It was not optional. We're meeting at one o'clock.
Be there, be square. Okay, except it's a superintendent's evaluation, yes, so thank you, um, Mark led the meeting last time. Thought it would be good to vote on that evaluation when there were more people here, so now we've got four people here, and we're going to, um, vote on the results. Does anyone else have anything else to add? I, I watched the live stream, so I certainly, um, agree with everything, all the comments that were made. I obviously put the evaluation together, um, and you guys had your opportunity to talk through it. So, um, I think we're good to vote unless anybody else has anything else they wanna add.
Nope, good.
Move to accept the superintendent's evaluation as presented.
Can you just have the date?
Two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, summative evaluation as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and then also, um, same time of year, moving on to the superintendent's contract. Um, we added an additional two years, um, well, we would, we're, we met an executive session, and the proposal is to add, uh, an additional two years, uh, to Mr. Adams' contract. Um, and we also are considering some language clarifying, um, the conferences that Mr. Adams is attending, um, as well as adjusting the salary in accordance to his evaluation results. So, unless anybody has anything further to add, um, we can vote on those changes in open session here.
So I'll make a motion to increase Mr. Adams' contract by two years through June thirty, twenty twenty-five, including clarifying language regarding attending state regional and national conferences.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent, thank you. School committee calendar, we all got a copy of the promos calendar. Anybody have any questions, comments?
I did have actually one question, 'cause I, in the summer retreat, there are two things. One, I thought we had, we'd start them at nine, and the other is, I've had the second date is August thirteenth, not August sixteenth.
Yeah, me too.
Sixteenth actually works better for me, so it's fine, but, but, um,
Let me see what I heard.
I have it as the thirteenth as well, I'm looking at my calendar.
It was Tuesday.
Yeah, I have it Tuesday, not Friday.
Okay, so we are, it's.
Is that what you had?
Yeah, I don't know why, it would, wouldn't have been a Friday.
And did we agree that we were starting at nine?
Actually, I had it on the sixteenth, too.
I went back and checked the email.
But did you put it, did you put it on there after you got the, the calendar?
No, but we didn't get, did we get some notice that it changed?
No, it was the thirteenth.
It was always the thirteenth.
It was, yeah.
The date you had on one email.
I think I had the thirteenth, sixteenth, there's two dates, but it was thirteenth, it was the one chosen.
Alright, so it's the thirteenth.
So nine AM, we'll just adjust this. Nine AM, on the thirteenth, and the thirtieth. Before we publish this, I'll just make sure.
Okay. Other than that, anything else with the calendar?
I have no idea what I'm doing January twenty-second, but we'll figure it out.
Yeah, well, the only thing that I noticed, I mean, I know this happens, uh, uh, often, sometimes in the fall because of our conference and other things. So it looks like we're only meeting once in October, once in November.
Yes.
I mean, I, we can wait till we get to that point, and if we need to add something, because sometimes the fall can be busy, um, or just do people wanna have a placeholder there now. It won't be on our usual date, because it's obviously, the date's not there for a reason. But are folks comfortable moving forward and then seeing at the time if we need something additional? Okay.
I, my sense is that we've often had those meetings there, although it feels like they should be longer.
Yeah.
Because it's early part of the year, that they've actually been pretty short, so.
Okay.
So I'll just make a point, 'cause Mr. Kendall did reach out to me, there are a couple, um, there were a couple of dates that I actually, in previous years, I left off on purpose, because we traditionally had canceled one or another.
Right.
And there is one, the one in February, for instance, is, um, the year, this year, it would actually be at, um, it would be February twelfth.
During the vacation.
It, no, it's the week before vacation, but, but Dr. Veer and I will be at the, the co- a national conference on that, that week. You're welcome to have your school committee meeting, um, without us, I just didn't put it there because, um, I knew, in fact, when that conference was this year.
I think for planning purposes, for the major things that we do year-round, you know, we can work with this calendar and just put them in different places.
Yeah.
As long as everybody's understanding that if things do come up and it's just not enough, we, we've gotta find a time.
Yeah, I mean, the thing that you should do is time sensitive around that, when the year's the budget.
Right, correct.
But we're not gonna be really doing anything with that, with that.
Without you guys, right, yeah. And then there's a week that is out of the picture because of the vacation, so February's tricky usually anyway. So I, I say leave it alone, and then if, if people, folks are just willing to be flexible in the event that we need to meet, we'll, we'll set something up then. Sound good? Do we wanna vote on the calendar, make a motion?
Uh, move to approve the calendar as amended.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Um, superintendent's report?
Uh, I have none, with the exception of just saying that, um, I thought graduation went extremely well. I, I, I met with, um, you know, a group of parents on Wednesday of last week, and a number of them commented how, um, you know, how well they thought graduation went. And it was, um, I forget, one parent said, you know, Jim, this was probably my twentieth graduation that I've been to, as a national, um, employee and or parent, and they said it was, to them, one of the finest ones. I, I know who, actually who it was, it, it was a, it was a citizen. Bernie Kane called me.
Oh.
Uh, and called me personally and said, hey, Jim, I just wanted to let you know, I, I thought that was the finest graduation I've ever been to. And for Mr. Kane to call and, and, uh, you know, he's probably been a hundred of them.
Just in his own family.
His own family, right? Um, but that being said, I, I thought, you know, I, I, you know, compliment, Kelly was here, you know, the work that, that she puts in, and she allows the students to really take an active part in organizing, um, the graduation. And, and as she and I were talking, as the class sizes are getting larger, uh, we've gotta look at some things with regard to the length of the, uh, the ceremony and, and scholarships, et cetera. So, um, those will be discussions we have, uh, next year.
Excellent. Assistant superintendent's report?
Just briefly, um, you have a copy of my May monthly report, but just one thing to highlight on there, and Pete stole some of my thunder. Uh, when I started here, we did a self-study on wellness and also in English. And last year, we did one in math and in science. We've done a lot of work, those documents and those recommendations that came from teachers are actually a living, breathing document. And Pete highlighted two of the big initiatives out of it, the responsive classroom that came out of the wellness and that social emotional piece, and then the literacy that came out of the ELA study and the work that we've been doing with, um, pre-K to five literacy and the work that still needs to be done going forward with it. So just really proud of the staff and the teachers that have, um, put a lot of effort into those initiatives and have fully embraced them, and hopefully are gonna continue running with them. So if you have some time, take a look at those, and I'd be happy to answer any questions on my, uh, end of the year report that I submitted.
Excellent.
Thanks, Paul.
Thank you.
Thanks, Paul.
Warren approvals? Kathy?
Yes. Between May twenty-second, two thousand nineteen, and June twelfth, two thousand nineteen, I, Kathleen Bates, authorized by my signature, payables in the amount of nine hundred forty-five thousand, five hundred sixty-nine dollars and forty-two cents. This includes general fund expenses of five hundred forty-six thousand, six hundred thirty-four dollars and eighty cents, revolving expenses of three hundred sixty thousand, three hundred ninety-six dollars and ten cents, and grant expenses of thirty-eight thousand, three hundred seven dollars and eighty-two cents. I also authorized meals tax in the amount of two hundred thirty dollars and seventy cents. Finally, I authorized payroll in the amount of one million, two hundred fifty-four thousand, eight hundred twenty dollars and eighty-nine cents.
Excellent, thank you, Kathy.
You are welcome.
Um, May twenty-second, twenty nineteen minutes, does anybody have any changes, comments?
I do not think I did.
Did they get sent out electronically?
No, I do not have any changes.
She didn't send it out.
Wasn't in the list.
No, it wasn't all the attachments, I think.
Yeah.
So I, I have not reviewed them.
I don't get the attachment, so.
I did, I didn't notice, 'cause I wasn't at that meeting, but, um,
So I haven't reviewed them, I'm sure they're awesome, but.
Yeah, as always.
Yeah, we can, we can put it on the next agenda, sorry, unless you wanna.
It's up to you, I generally don't. It's up to you, I generally don't spend a lot of time reviewing them and don't worry too much about it.
I'm, I'm, I'm fine, I don't think there was anything
I think they looked fine.
Kathy, we're gonna trust Kathy.
Kathy's a very thorough reviewer of minutes, it's actually a good idea.
It's her name on the end of it even.
Yes.
Erin, is there any mistakes in there?
So we move to approve the minutes of May twenty second, two thousand nineteen as presented.
And I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, excellent. Gifts and donations?
Yes, we have a couple here. Ashland preschool, PTO, one thousand two hundred dollars for year end gift and storage items. Ashland K twelve, PTO, one hundred and forty-four dollars donation to the art program for square one art. Wait, twenty dollars to the class of two thousand nineteen class gift. Wait, one hundred and eight dollars, fifty-seven cents to student council at the high school. The Warren Book Fair brought in nine thousand three hundred eighteen dollars, six cents for the Warren Library. Jill Verns donated one hundred dollars to Mendez. The Ashland PTO donated one thousand dollars for the fifth grade banquet. In AHS class of nineteen sixty-eight, donated four hundred dollars to the AHS library for a total of twelve thousand, two hundred ninety dollars, sixty-three cents.
Lovely, do we have a motion to accept the gifts and donations?
I move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Member updates, we'll start with you Erin, welcome.
That's the only reason she came in late.
I've been listening to you guys since Hartford and it's not synced because I ran up here to talk about the calendar. So can I ask one question because I didn't get to hear, so December fourteenth is the budget day, I believe?
Mm-hmm. Let's take a look.
Natively, yes.
Okay, my only concern that I had with that is that is the Sandy Hook anniversary and that's the day that Mike Kyra usually tells us to go spend with our families and make special.
Okay.
So, just a thought.
duly noted.
I think that date is often moved because, right Jim?
Yeah, we just put it in there.
It's a placeholder, that's a good point, but I, I don't know if it's ever actually happened that early, right? Usually we're not really ready to have
This year it was in Jan, January.
Yeah, like I remember it was on like the twenty-first of December one year.
Gotcha, yeah.
Okay.
I won't do that again either.
Yeah.
One year it was on my birthday.
Yeah, no fun.
And I think we canceled it.
In honor of you.
That's the only thing.
Okay, yep.
Yes, thank you.
And I wrote tentative next to it, anyway.
And man, those Model UN kids were
Weren't they amazing? I know, they really are. I wanna join their team or hire them or something.
Or both.
Yeah, or dress like them, something.
I'm not sure you can get there in their club, for lots of reasons.
Am I past the age limit?
They got their act together though.
Yeah.
That's right.
You're not suggesting Lori does it, right?
What are you saying exactly?
I'm saying they set the bar pretty high for all of us.
They certainly do and we should be very proud of them. All right, Paul?
All right, so I apologize if I haven't. Looking back, so for the MSBA updates, we had the designer walkthrough. And today at eleven AM was the deadline for designer submittals, so I think we got seven. Jim's reviewed them, I have not yet. We'll have a meeting on Tuesday, the eighteenth, as a building committee to review the proposals. I also attended the band concert, graduation. We had the fifth grade banquet as well, thanks to the PTO for that. I also wanna put out a plug for Winnet at Mendez is tomorrow night. The guys are currently over there rehearsing and it's, it's a great event, so if you have a fifth grader, you should absolutely go. It's a blast if you're a dad and haven't shown up yet, come on out, we can always use hands and it's a great time.
That would be, that would be me, right Paul? In this crowd?
It's being, it's being recorded, there's probably one or two people watching, so. But yeah, you
Yeah, but that person is here now.
Yeah, I'm here.
Feel free to show up. And I believe that's it.
Thank you, Kathy?
Did you mention the policy subcommittee?
Oh no, I didn't mention it.
You.
Yeah.
I always steal your thunder.
Right.
I always steal your thunder, so, we met like three, four times, right?
Yeah, we did. We got a lot of good work done there.
You guys have been doing a lot of work, thank you.
Yeah, we've been doing a lot of work there. I did, wanted to tell you, I went to the ASH PAC meeting last night, that was the last one for the year. And just something that they wanted me to bring to the group. There is a state representative, James Arcerio, recently filed legislation to give the parents of special education students a greater voice with school committee across Massachusetts. So it's just legislation that he's filed, I'm not sure where it is right now. But I did, I'll pass along that information just as a heads up or FYI.
Yeah, I think it's came through on our, on our listserv, if you're following the MASCE listserv.
Okay.
Yeah, great, thanks.
It's very short in terms of the legislation, it's probably three sentences long, but what they're proposing, so.
Mark?
Just the, the big events, graduation, which I thought, I agree, was, was really special. Fifth grade events, the chorus, the
Oh yeah, chorus as well.
Chorus. Last night was the banquet, today was the fifth grade, they would send off.
Oh my gosh.
Well, there were a lot of tissues used.
A lot of things happening at the end of the year.
Mostly for the teachers actually today, so.
You know what, they, they, they get sad too. Yeah, thank you Mark, yeah, other than graduation, I think that was the big one for me. Also wonderful event from my point of view and that's it? Yeah. Okay, onto action items. Everything's scheduled for our summer retreat at this point. Oh, first of all, I should ask how everybody feels about, I think we've covered everything that we need to cover for, up until our summer retreat. There is a meeting on the schedule for the end of June, which I'm proposing that we go without because I think we're, we're good until our July, our retreat. So we have some consensus on that?
Yeah, no, I, I would agree with that.
All these topics are for the summer anyway. And they include district fees, athletic fee structure, discussion of Columbus Day, calendar holidays, Mendez academic study discussion, school start times update, communication strategies, and also here's your opportunity to let either myself or Jim know about anything you want to talk about this summer. We're gonna have two meetings, as you know, because there's a lot to discuss. And I think what often happens is we roll things out into the fall and this time we're dedicating the time this summer so we can have some good discussions about a lot of big, big things. But that doesn't mean that you can't make a suggestion if you think there's something else that we should be covering. Now's the time, send it along and if it works into the timeframe, we'll, we'll consider putting it on.
So if we, if we wanted to add it, just send it to you, Lori?
Send it to me and, you know, or Jim, to see the other, you know, send it to both of us and we'll work with market.
Or both. Alright.
We'll have at least another one or two agenda planning meetings for these meetings. So just letting you know that your input is welcome. And so if you see something, if you think it's something that you're not seeing on this list or on the proposed list I think Jim sent around at one point, please let us know.
Okay, great.
Other than that, I think we're good and if there's a motion to adjourn, I will entertain it.
Awesome.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.